Good evening, everyone. I'm now calling this regular school committee meeting of March 21st, 2022 at 6:00 P. M. to order. Doctor, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Welcome. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee.
Resource committee. We met on March 14th. We went over grants to be submitted, 21st Century Grant, two from the United Way, three from the United Way, and one grant to be accepted from the Mass Cultural Council. Eva Kelly gave us an update on the enrollment. She shared enrollment trends over the last five years. Some of the interesting things that she pointed out, we've had a 58% increase in immigrant students, 38.7% in special ed students, and a 45.5% in EL students, with a significant number of them from Brazil. There was no reason why, and 21.7% pre-K students. We got an update from Donna Hildreth on transportation, everything is good. IT with Eileen Spinney. We got a budget update from Mr. Shalafu. Some of the other programs we're talking about tonight that are on the agenda, the VIP van program at Fitchburg High School, which has been an excellent feeder program for the high school, which I'm very supportive of, the solar project at Fitchburg High School. We discussed the SBA accelerated repair program for the Long Joe windows, and a statement of interest in boilers at Long Joe.
Any questions? Seeing none moving on school building needs.
Building needs. We met on the 14th also. Joe Richardson gave us an update on the buildings, the planning that's going on. They're putting out a bid for ceiling tiles at the South Street Gym, the roof assessment for solar panels at Long Joe Middle School, a couple of new positions that the subcommittee And we discussed Crocker Field Project, turf project, the building use by outside groups. We would like to get back to where we were before the pandemic with the outside groups being able to use the school gyms and the Crocker Field.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. Policy committee, Mr. Horgan.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. Student support committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to report that for the last two and a half weeks, Principal Roach allowed me to go into the high school with approval of the athletic director also to be able to teach the track team, the girls' track team, low-impact aerobics to get them ready for their training that's starting today. So we were able to go in and do some workout with the girls and strengthen all the muscles around their bodies, and so now they're ready for track. So we're looking forward to a good track season. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? School personnel committee, nothing to report at this time. Executive committee, nothing at this time as well. Student representatives, your report, please.
All students in grade 10 tomorrow and Wednesday will be taking the English and Language Arts M-CAS assessments. Also, the second semester is approaching at Fitchburg High. Before April 1st, the second semester officially begins. So on March 30th, Fitchburg High will host parent-teacher conferences in person or virtually from 12:00 to 2:00 P. M. or 5:00 to 7:00 P. M. Thank you, that is all I have to say.
So Fitchburg High School is running a Boys and Girls State Program. This June, I've been working with the representative for that, Mr. Richard Vaughn, and we're just trying to promote that for student leadership and to help improve the civic action of our students at Fitchburg High School. We've also seen some developments in our eco-friendliness and becoming a more green school. We're getting new solar panels, hopefully in the summer of 2023. There was a meeting earlier today about this. One thing that I would like to promote is the water bottle refilling stations because at Fitchburg High School, we currently need to have plastic water bottles in order to get water at the school because our bubbler system is currently dysfunctional. I suggest, and we suggest as a school, to improve the infrastructure regarding water bottle refilling stations and water bubblers in the school. And another thing, we have recently gotten new vending machines installed in the school, and it has been suggested that in order to help students make healthier choices with their eating, that some of those vending machines may be filled with fruits and/or vegetables that are nourishing and healthy for the students. Thank you, that is all.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Doctor.
The question is for Ms. Tia. Is there any type of public relation in addition to what has been done in the past, done to bring out the Hispanic parents to the Parents Teacher Conference?
Yes, there has been.
What exactly is, can you share something that has been done?
Yes, they've had parent conferences for the first semester and also at the beginning of the year, just basically to display what's going on with students and how well they're doing in their academics.
Did you get a large percent of Hispanic parents attending the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, more or less what percent? I hate to bother you.
I don't know the percentage right now.
Okay. I just want to make sure because I'm Hispanic and I would like my gifts to be utilized. And if I can do something, like translate something or reach out, I was thinking back, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if there's any possibility for that, maybe send out some type of announcement on FATV in Spanish, reaching out to the parents. I believe that because they hear someone who speaks their language, they will feel more comfortable, and maybe they will want to come up more to the Parents Teacher Conference to support the students, if that's possible.
May I speak, Mayor?
Yes.
If I may comment on that, I have had a discussion today with some Hispanic students. We were discussing the promotion of language learning earlier than high school. Currently, in the Fitchburg Public School System, we have a very large percentage of bilingual students. I think the numbers, like close to 40% of our students are bilingual. However, we only have language learning starting in ninth grade, and I think it may be helpful both to the student well-being and to the community as a whole to incorporate foreign language learning into grades earlier than grade nine, potentially beginning with middle school but even elementary school, getting that exposure to other cultures and languages.
Is that true, Mr. Thompson?
It is. So currently, we offer foreign language beginning at grade eight, I mean, grade nine. Right now, we're having a very difficult time filling several Spanish teaching positions. So we actually had an initial conversation on what that looks like for the middle school and the elementary school. And like I said, we're having a very hard time finding someone for these positions. So until we can look at filling those positions at the high school, that's going to be our number-one focus right now. And hopefully, after things improve and the pandemic goes away, we can have more applicants for positions around foreign language.
One last thing, I know you said, what day is the Parents Teacher Conference at the high school?
It's March 30th.
Okay, coming up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're coming up to public comment after these next items. I'll let you know. Approve the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of February 28th.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Approve the minutes from the special school committee meeting of February 17th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Yes, Ms. Reynolds.
This may be.
Speaking on the motion.
I'm sorry.
Speaking on the motion.
Yes. This might be the place to say what I would like to say. This was the, was this the joint meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, what I would like to say is that many, many people came to speak here in this room, and also there were some parents that appeared on the FATV. And I made a request of the school department to have a list of the parents. They all gave their name as you requested, Mr. Mayor, and gave their name and where they lived, and I would like a list of that. Apparently, no list exists at the time, which I was surprised at. It sounds like something's sticking through the cracks, like when you have people before a meeting and they say something that should be, we should be noticed. So what I'm going to suggest is that we make that a regular event in the future, that whoever comes and speaks, we have a record of the people who spoke at the meeting and on the subject.
Would you suggest that they sign in with their name and address?
They did, they all, they all did, yeah, that was a good way. I know that they had to get permission from the superintendent's office as to coming to speak and also what they would speak about. So I naturally assumed that there was a record of that kept. But here, going forward, I would.
Ms. Reynolds, I agree. Apparently, it's a little thornier than we were hoping, so we need to do a deep dive into this, and we will as a school department, so taking a look at how that kind of information is captured and how it's disseminated.
Well, Mr. Mayor, when they, if anyone wishes to speak, there's a protocol prior to their being allowed to. And isn't that information on that? I mean, whoever gives grants permission?
Well, I'm sure it's a document, FATV has that tape, if you will.
But you know what I mean, it shouldn't be in all our records, and we could go back to it and refer to it if we'd like to and contact.
May I ask Ms. Greenlee, just to clarify?
Yeah, sure.
Public record and keeping notes for that?
Yes, it's not mandatory, according to Robert's Rules of Order, to include names of anybody, even people who are making motions. That's the basic rule. And when people come for, to do public comment on the day of, without having prior permission or requests to do so, it's nearly impossible to gather the correct name and spelling and address at that moment. But bottom line is that it's not actually a requirement. Yeah, we're required to keep records of motions, but not necessarily the names.
Well, I noted that during that meeting, Mr. Mayor, frequently you would refer, I think perhaps to Mr. Thompson and Mr. Shalafu as to who's coming up next or whatever. So a list of names, addresses, phone numbers must have existed at one point. Anyway, I would like to make that request in the future.
All right. So we are asking right now, our Fitchburg Access Television Tech, that's what else, he's going to go back and look at the recordings?
Might have a file?
From the videos, and we may be able to get that to you, but he's going to get back to me later on this week.
I'd like it in list form.
Yeah. Let's see what we can get, okay?
And in the future, please.
That may be something we want to talk about at policy subcommittee.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion made to approve the meeting minutes from February 17th, 2022, special school committee meeting.
We have a motion seconded.
Motion was seconded?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Thank you. No need for executive session at this time, communications, none as well. Public comment. You don't have to say your name and where you live, but if you want to, go ahead.
My name is Jean.
Yeah, I think you have to.
And I'm here because.
You do have to.
Yes.
You do have to?
Yes, yes.
My name is Jean.
We just don't have to share. Oh, okay, all right.
I live in Fitchburg. This is something that's been on my mind for a little bit. First of all, the language, I think elementary school is the perfect place to start it, and not only speaking, teaching the Spanish children to speak English or other cultures, but you need to also be teaching the English children, the English-speaking children, Spanish, because I have a nine-year-old who is having trouble communicating with her friends, and she tries so hard and messes it up so bad. So that would, I just wanted to comment on that.
Okay.
Then I wanted to comment on critical race theory. I was told it's not taught here, but however, I have a nine-year-old who, going through a store, is telling me that these are racist. Do you know what these are? Color crayons. Color crayons are racist because they don't have all the colors of all the people. And I told her, well, you just color a little darker for darker people and lighter for lighter people. There is no racism in America. There's that. Now, the topic I really wanted to get to. I got a form, only because I go through my grandson's backpack. I'm on top of stuff with my grandkids. I got this form here that I found, and I read through it and I thought, this doesn't make sense, because I have all of this here, this here throughout the school that I have to sign and return to the school saying, I give permission, but not this one. This one is for your sex education class. I found it quite appalling. And then to get the information for the sex education class, that was fun, too. But in reading it, it states that the kids will not be punished. He was punished. He got a B minus in that class because he didn't attend that course.
What school is this happening?
Long Joe.
Long Joe.
Okay, try to get copies of stuff from them and see what's going on. So this is what I wrote up. Bear with me, like I told you before, I am disruptive. I apologize, just is what it is. So I want to talk about CSE. First, it is not the school or the teacher's job to teach our children sex education. It is the school and the teacher's job to teach reading, writing, math, science.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time for public comment has expired. It's been three minutes.
Are you kidding me?
It's been three minutes, ma'am.
Well.
Do you know what?
It's technically three minutes, but go ahead.
In the paperwork, it says.
Yeah. Just go ahead, finish what you're reading.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. It looks like you're trying to make sex education part of the health curriculum or biology curriculum. These kids are not in medical school. They do not need to know the details about ejaculation or wet dreams, which is in their paperwork, you can look it up yourself, or any sexual information. It is 2022, not 1969. By the time these kids are in fifth grade, they already know way too much. My nine-year-old granddaughter just got a note from another nine-year-old saying that he had a crush on her and wanted to have sex with her. I have that note. So we don't need schools teaching what we need to be teaching them. If you feel that parents are lacking in this area, you need to propose to the state a class for the parents if they so wish. In 1969, they did not go into great detail as they do today, and we all learned just fine. Second, looking over school sex education packet I received from the school without ease, I noticed it refers to kids as young adults, women and men. These are children.
Ma'am, if that's the end of what, ma'am, if that's the end of the document you're reading, I ask that we.
It also states in the pamphlet, who can help answer the questions, and it states, parents, caregivers. The first person to go to, it did not state the school or the teachers, it states your parents, and it states that we have their best interest.
There's an opt-out policy that we have. Were you, are you the parent of the child?
Yes.
You are.
An opt-out, yeah.
And were you given that opportunity, correct?
This paper, like I said, all these papers here, you have to sign giving consent.
Right.
This paper here, it says right here, it says, should you decide to exclude your child, please indicate below and sign this paper. That's if you want to opt out.
Right.
Okay, how many parents are going to see this? Because you don't have to return it if your kid's going to do it. But in order for kids to do all this, you have to sign and return this, but not this one. This one, you don't have to sign and return it, only if you don't want your child doing it.
Right.
How about signing and returning it if you want your child to do it? How many parents are not going to see this? Like, I didn't get the finished reading, they're just stuck in a backpack in a locker, thrown in the trash. Most parents don't go through the backpacks. Most parents don't bother to really check because they're too busy to check and see what their kid has.
Ma'am, I advocated for that position, actually, for it to be an opt-out program because the pregnancy rate of the high school was far too high from the state average, and it was an important topic. But we're not going to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue because public comment is not a back-and-forth dialogue. I see that the three minutes has expired. I appreciate your comments. I do wish that we could have a back-and-forth, but we're not able.
This is the kind of thing you bring to the principal as well.
Right. I did.
You sat down with them one-on-one?
Sat down with her. I sat down with the vice-principal, both of them. Do you know what it was like to get a copy of what they did?
She did not accept the fact that you wanted your child opted out?
Oh, no, he got to opt out.
Okay.
But he's been punished. They put him in a special area. It is appalling. Why do I have to sign for them to use a computer?
I don't want to sound like I'm giving you the runaround, but now you escalate that to the superintendent's office. If you're not satisfied with what the principal has told you or what they've set up, you talk to Bob Jokler as the superintendent of schools.
Okay.
That's the next level, all right?
I will, I will.
And then if you have to, then you can call me as well, but.
I just don't understand why we don't have to sign and allow them to do it.
Okay.
And I don't want them to be.
Well, I'm glad, thank you for bringing this to our attention, but again, yeah, if you can utilize access to the principal or the superintendent, if you're not satisfied, that would be advisable.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was all on record that this is what's going on and what the content is.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we make a comment on the?
Please, go ahead.
Not allowed now? Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, what do you want to say?
I just want to say it's more than just saying, signing, and letting your child opt out. You're sensing something that I sense, which is extreme dereliction in handling the sensitive subjects with children as if they were adults. And I applaud you for bringing it forth. It's difficult to word it in a way, and it's difficult to get our attention. And I want to apologize to you because I don't think whatever we do here right now sufficiently will be a bomb to your acute interest in the subject.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next superintendent's report. Bob, are you going to do that remotely or?
I believe there's another public comment.
I will.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's all right.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, ma'am, yeah, go ahead.
I'm short. My name is Susan, I live on Sheridan Street.
Pull it down a little more. Yeah, there you go.
Good? Okay. My name is Susan, I live on Sheridan Street. So last week, they spoke about the Student Opportunity Act, and they also spoke about the redistricting. I was able to find the Student Opportunity Act plan for Fitchburg on the DESI website, that's the Department of Education website. In a paragraph, in one of the paragraphs, focus area one, it says that the district, the district is also in the start of equity work that is a multi-year project through the Disruptive Equity Education Project, DEEP. I don't know if you guys are familiar with DEEP, but according to their website, they are a professional development and strategy organization that is focused on the intentional developmental and complex work that is associated with changing mindsets around equity and dismantling systemic oppression and racism. DEEP aims to bridge stronger connections to humanity and embrace challenges in equity with love, care, while offering key insights and strategic interventions that sustain diversity, belonging, inclusion, and equity over time. That kind of sounds like critical race theory to me. It's being taught to the teachers. And I had asked a question last week about what culturally responsive teaching is. And if you go to the DESI website, there's a lot of videos there that talk about resource. These are videos that teach teachers how to be culturally responsive. And some of the titles of the videos say, Culturally Responsive Teaching Kid Library, Exploring the Identity Through Literature, Examination of Stereotype and Bias, Surrounding Immigration Using a Book Group Model, Challenging Common Narratives About Blackness, Xenophobia and Becoming an Ally. And this is on the DESI website. This is concerning to me. It shouldn't be taught to our teachers because it's going to our teachers and then it's going to our students. And it's obviously going to be implemented in Fitchburg because of this Student Opportunity Act. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may make a related comment.
So I offered a little bit of latitude with the last speaker, but technically, we don't go back and forth debating.
Oh, we don't go back and forth, it's okay. I won't speak.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? See, but you've already had your opportunity. You'll have to come back next month.
Does he have any time? I don't think. Can he give you his time?
No. He's not looking, he's not wishing to speak.
It was Brooklyn, I just. You should put home economics and shop and stuff back at junior high.
Next superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to begin tonight's meeting, we have our Director of Health Services and Nursing, Pam Rivers, with us. She's going to provide an overview, an update for nursing services within the school district. And after Pam's presentation, we have a couple of representatives from our telehealth firm partner, Hazel Health, and the two individuals with us tonight are Claudia Nogales and Steve Gatlin. So Pam, please come up to the podium, and I will run your presentation for you. If I can share my screen?
Well, that's loading. Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight to present to you. I will be presenting, as the superintendent had shared, on the nursing and health services for the district. My name is Pamela Rivers, and I am the Director of the Nursing and Health Services.
Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. So to start with the why, why nursing and health services in an educational setting? To answer the why, all students deserve to be healthy in mind and body. All students deserve to receive health care, to be educated in their health and in their health practices. And we are equipped with a nursing staff who is very capable of doing this, very professional members. Thank you. So the role of the 21st Century Nurse. This is from the National Organization Position Statement. The school nurse serves in a pivotal role that bridges health care and education. I hope you'll find that to be true this evening. Grounded by standards of practice, services provided by the school nurse include leadership, community, public health, care coordination, and quality improvement. The 21st Century school nursing practice is student-centered. It occurs within the context of the student's family and school community. It is essential that all students have access to full-time school nurses all day, every day. And I'm very pleased to share with you that the Fitchburg Public Schools absolutely embrace this, and we are able to provide health care throughout, through all students all day. through all students, all day." So, our focus is in outcomes. First of all, number one is optimal health and well-being, which equals health care for all students. This includes physical and psychological and/or social-emotional health care. Secondly, student's health equals readiness to learn. So, school attendance is one of those facets that nursing services support. We monitor our return-to-class rates. Generally speaking, in Massachusetts, through the Comprehensive School Health Services, their bar is like 90% or higher. We have, in all of the years, exceeded this. This is the first year we're slightly below, and certainly related to the pandemic and the importance of not attending while you are sick as a superintendent who's not feeling well, is not attending in a public, so carrying that through. I'm happy to share with you that trends are changing. The last monthly report that we did, the trend was up to 91%. And I'm very sure that we'll be back to the 90th percentiles with the return-to-class rate, students healthy and ready to learn. Thirdly, school health and school nurses are indirectly... They indirectly improve attendance and achievement outcomes throughout. They do this through connections, relationships, and education. And fourth, the cultural responsive practice. This equals improving health equity and ensures all students' health and safety that is supportive and free from bias, is the goal. So, how do we do this? We do this through ruling out barriers to learning. We want to improve students' engagement abilities. We are required to conduct mandated screenings, which include hearing, vision, postural screenings, height and weight, body mass index recordings, getting information for physical examinations, whether it's from a private practice and/or within the schools. And then the ESPOR training, which is a screening, brief intervention, and referral for treatment as needed. And the result of this is students' readiness for learning. So, there is also specific interred health care and for needs and encounters. As you can see, student encounters in the school nurse's office range from about 50 to 90 per day. This includes taking care of the student's needs, and again, indirectly improving attendance and their achievement outcomes as they're prepared in health and readiness. The nurses work very diligently on things like acute care health care, emergency care, chronic conditions, and health maintenance. They conduct medication administration throughout the day, sometimes on a regular basis, sometimes on a needed basis. They oversee the immunizations, are connected with the Massachusetts Immunization Registry System, and follow up on physical examinations from local practices. With this, they are able to find out and work collaboratively with students' medical diagnosis, medical conditions, some of which include further care and safety practices. There's connections to devices and technology so that we can monitor the students throughout the day if they're on field trips and other areas within the school sites and buildings. There's certainly connections with nutrition services, working with the students and their families on nutrition. Sometimes this involves tube feedings with students. And always health education and safety. This can include mental wellness in health, depression awareness, suicide prevention, and substance use abuse awareness and prevention. And that was a part of the ESPOR that you saw prior to. So, a little bit more on the social-emotional health care and the focus on overall well-being. These are a couple of posters. If you're walking through some of the schools, you might see, and just positive information for students. More than that, from some of the professional development and education, we want to think about focusing on when we change the way we look at things, the things you look at change. Another way is the inference of looking up or upthinking. And with that, you're focusing on your opportunity. So, you're presented with something, and it could be a challenge, it could be something else, but you want to see the opportunity in it, whether it's the education or the improved health care. So, we don't do this alone. Schools are a subset of the community, and we certainly collaborate and connect with multiple community members. So, locally here in Pittsburgh, throughout the state, connected down in Worcester to UMass, and then across the state with services, including the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the Massachusetts Department of Education's Secondary Education. Just looking here at the multiple collaborations and connections that we have, and focusing on, again, the physical and the social-emotional wellness. Something that's new or newer with the... That's come out of the pandemic is the telehealth services. We have local telehealth services, and we'll hear more from the telehealth services that we've partnered with. So, what were some of the changes in coming back to the school that we had during this pandemic? Some of the changes included, again, furthered education, updated information, research, working with our students and families, working with our school group and our community on safety practices and what was in the best interest of students, families, and again, just safety. At the very beginning of the pandemic, when we weren't in person, the nurses collaborated with the community, and then right up until the present time. The collaboration included vaccine administrations. It included safety monitoring and symptoms monitoring, contact tracing. It involved aligning, like, health practices and education throughout. So, the Comprehensive School Health Services is one of our grants from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the School Health Unit. Their focus on culturally responsive practice was one of the goals that they suggested that went forward into the SMART goals and evaluation tools. And as you see here, there is an evaluation tool developed that we have developed in district to focus on that. But more importantly, this offering further supports the school and the district's goal. And I wanted to share here that Hazel Health, we'll hear from next, is a telehealth service that is noted to be the largest and most trusted telehealth provider for K-12 schools. This is a branding poster that you'll see around the schools that was done with the nurses as a collaborative group. I wanted to, as we open it up for any comments or questions at the end of this presentation, just to kind of leave this up so that you can see all of the focuses and the services that the health professionals provide during the school day. And I'd be remiss if I didn't share that it's not just in the K-12 time period, but what we're doing is assisting students and their families, educating them, and promoting health and wellness to last a lifetime because that's what we want to do. We want to prepare them for life even beyond the school. So, thank you very much, and if there's any questions or comments. Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Thank you very much, Pam, I appreciate that, and appreciate having the handout. When we, we, I guess, returned back to school, did the nurses notice more visits by students? Or was it same as it was before the pandemic began?
To be quite honest, it was actually a little bit less.
A little bit less, okay.
Yeah. And then over time, you know, we're kind of back, getting closer to back to where we were prior to.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Reynolds?
Each school meeting that we have, school committee meeting that we have, I make a request to see the data, the health data, on where, when, to whom, all of the different COVID shots were given in the city. I would think that that would just be normal data. I've never received anything to date, and that disturbs me because I'd like to feel like we're responsible. I would like also included in that is... You listed several of these things on your page, "Practice Unique to Schools Reopening Post-COVID." You mentioned being diligent and all of these things, but there's no adverse effects reported. And surely, there must be many adverse effects. And that is a subject matter of our care and concern for the children. So, I find that oversight just an impossible thing for responsible, intelligent people, which we are charged to be. And may I ask you why there's no adverse effects ever mentioned in the data?
So, can you clarify adverse effects to what specifically?
Anything that's reported post the injection of the material into anybody's body. Did they complain of headaches? Did they, anybody have an increase in underlying situations or even any, any adverse effects? Like, if somebody falls down, and an adverse effect from their fall might be a cut or inflammation or... That, to me, is just ordinary, and I'm flummoxed. That's a big word, but I'm flummoxed that responsible people don't do that. Where's the list? Do you have a list of each school who was injected with which COVID vaccine, the date, the time, all of that?
So, anything that was provided during the school, we collaborated with the state in their offerings and/or our own Board of Health. So, we were, we supported, and they were the ones that collected the data and submitted any documentation that they needed, and that's the information that you hear about.
I don't know who you're referring to when you say they collected the data.
So, the city of Pittsburgh, so the Board of Health were some of the individuals that collected any information on, you know, vaccinations, to whom, and any, you know, follow-up side effects or whatever.
You didn't keep a list yourselves individually or at each post or at each site that it was, these medical things were, took place?
We collaborated, so no, there was one list kept. That's how it was conducted.
Because I have asked the Health Department, and I even wrote, hand-wrote a letter to the mayor to please provide that. And I think at one time, he suggested he would ask the Health Department to provide it, but I never, never get an answer. And I'll tell you, because as time goes on, there are immense numbers of bad effects. To our chagrin, and I also think, I want to insist that that be part of the whole picture. Now, whether or not each school does it, I mean, a city or district, but I want our district to be on the ball and to have all data.
So, as I had shared, Rosemary, the immunizations are part of the Massachusetts Immunization Registry System that we have access to. So, they will be recorded in that, there'll be access to that, and that's for all of the immunizations.
Well, why haven't I been able to get that? In other words, each site, how many children, what exactly was given to them? I just say that because I noted something in the paper that Thailand has given out $145... No, $45 million in COVID vax injuries, and the United States has given back nothing. But I anticipate there's many COVID vax injuries that we will be responsible for. I also am unhappy with the thought that our schools now have plenty of money due to... Have money due to the funds, federal funds, or wherever the funds came from. And, but our children are in harm's way, and our society's in harm's way. So, I want to, I want better record, I want record keeping. I can't believe that we don't have it. That Pittsburgh would shift it off, I don't know, to whom? The state, somebody? State should have it, and we should have it.
Thank you, Rosemary.
And I think you're saying we don't have it.
I'm not saying we don't have it.
Can you provide it to me at some point?
I can look into those that we collaborated with for their records. I could do that, yes.
No, the city of Pittsburgh, our school, our children. At what site were they given it? What exact COVID shot were they given? That kind of thing.
Ms. Rivers, can you collaborate with Steve Curry?
Sure.
Steve and I have spoken about this.
Of course I could.
I'm not, maybe I am making excuses, but he's just chasing his tail some days. This is a little more challenging to dig out that information, but if you could reach out to him
Absolutely, absolutely.
and possibly assist him in coming up with some numbers that might satisfy... Ms. Reynolds?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do appreciate that, but it should satisfy all of us.
Okay.
Yeah.
All of us, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Walsh?
Just to clarify, one of the things that Ms. Reynolds said about to whom, that kind of information can't be given out, persons' names, who came in and got shots, correct?
There is privacy around that, yes.
You're right, so you can say, "At this school, 55 children got vaccinations." That's the extent of what you can do, correct? Thank you.
I don't even know if you can get, if somebody had an infection that, from it, whether we would have that information. Somebody might go to their own doctor.
Correct.
And again, that would not be public information. And actually, I'm very satisfied with the vaccination program. I've had my three shots in my children and grandchildren, and I'm very satisfied with what our Board of Health schools have done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds.
And I'll just take a minute and introduce our partners from Hazel Health, Claudia Nagales and Steve Gatlin. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Good evening, I'm Steve Gatlin with Hazel Health.
Hi, good evening, I'm Claudia Nagales.
And we have some slides, I think, that might guide the conversation. Pam, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. While the superintendent is preparing the slides, I would just say that our organization is just very humbled and honored to work with Pittsburgh schools. We essentially are working to help students when they are in school and get ill. And we're hoping to keep them safely in school so that they don't have to go back in the community necessarily for things that could be treated at school. Simple minute clinic sort of concept within a school setting is maybe a way to think about it. And we were founded by some district leaders who were looking at a group of kids that were consistently sort of non-performing, and they looked at, you know, some of the causes and were surprised to find that many of these kids did not have great access to health care, hence, a simple ailment would snowball, and the student would miss a lot of school time. So, on the slide here, you just sort of see the concept. It's school-based telehealth, that's sort of the idea. So, when a student visits the health office at a school, one of Pam's nurses, and the nurse ascertains or determines that they would like to have a pediatrician take a look at the student, we can work with the nurse to have that happen within two or three minutes. And telehealth isn't perfect, so you can't assess everything by a telehealth, but you can certainly ascertain some, a majority of things that typically kids come into school for. So, maybe on the next slide, we could just show you how this looks and feels. These are, I won't read these because I know there's a lot of text up here, but essentially, what you'll see here as you sort of look at these quickly is just a situation where a student, either from home or at school, was not feeling great, and we are able to work with the family to connect the student to a pediatrician who could help give the student care quickly. So, this is an example. Your students have the ability to, before school and after school. The families can do a telehealth visit if they so determine. This is an example where a mom or a family was concerned about a sore throat and headache. They had a telehealth visit, and essentially, we're able to ascertain that the student didn't have COVID and also didn't have strep. And I think the win here was that the mom or parents were able to keep the student away from a clinic or an ER. Now, many students across the country do not have a primary care physician, and sometimes you see that in some of the visits that we have. So, we are always looking to, in a case like this, to connect a student to a local physician to be their... to be their medical home. We'll just go to the next example quickly. This was a visit that happened at school. Let's see if we can get there. Just for congestion and sneezing, and I think the nurse in this case was like, "Is this COVID? Does this student have COVID?" And we worked with the history of the student. It was determined the student had allergies, et cetera, and we were able to get the students to OTC meds and essentially prevent the student from having to have, the father in this case come to school and leave work to pick up the student. One other example we'll share quickly, and I'm moving quickly because I want to be respectful of your time. You'll see a theme here, though. Superintendent, if you could, yeah, thank you. Student came into the office with a rash. Through the telehealth visit, that sort of, in just a few minutes, we were able to determine that we could treat the rash with an OTC, and the student could go back to class. The mom and dad were, the mom and nurse were thankful for the treatment, and we also worked with the mom to help understand, like, there were some irritants at home, there was allergic reaction that was happening, so we helped the parent understand how they can prevent it from happening. So none of these are life and death, you know, medical situations we're dealing with, but they are things that possibly, in some of these cases, we think many of these cases, the student may have had to leave campus to see a doctor or go to a clinic or go to maybe an ER. And if we could, through the intervention with a pediatrician, examine the student in consult with the nurse and safely keep the student on campus, every time that happens, it looks like it's about three hours of instructional time that's saved. So if you think about transportation, you think about getting into the clinic, getting into a doctor, it seems to be averaging out to about three hours. And we're going to show you a couple of slides. Superintendent, if we could just skip a few forward. This is one here that talks a little bit about now what we've seen thus far. Now, this is even a little bit dated, because there's been a real increase in years. There's been about 200 visits for this school year. There have been a lot in the last week since we actually pulled this data. And on a 30-day basis, like a rolling 30 days, we're seeing about 130 kids, so that's about five or six a day, you know, across the schools overall. And I noticed Pam had showed a number that showed, I think, 50 to 90 visits happen in the nurse's office every day. So crudely, 10% or so, you know, might, the nurse might say, "Gosh, I'd like to have a pediatrician take a look at the student," overall. It has really increased a lot. I think we've come out of some of the, you know, the period of the surge and sort of, you know, Pam had actually mentioned that visits kind of went down to the nurse's office a little bit in the height of the pandemic. They're coming back up again for sure. About six of eight schools in the district have done a visit, if you will. And one thing that's really important is that we will only work with a student that has been consented by their family. So that is a positive, either a proactive consent, where we'll send something home electronically or a paper, and the family will consent, or there is an ability to do a verbal consent one time, and then the family would have to fill out a form after that. About 720 of the roughly 4,200 or so students are consented or have gone through that process. Not all have said yes. Some families have said, "We would like our students not to participate." About one in five have declined. Majority have agreed to participate. So it's roughly about 10% of the student body that is able and consented to see, to have a visit overall. And then just on the next slide, I know this is a little bit hard to read, and it already is about two weeks old, but this is a bit of a snapshot. It is, the font is very hard, but I'll just tell you the highlights here. We provide this to Pam and the superintendent every month, kind of a snapshot of impact. And some of the good news coming out of Pittsburgh is that of the students that will have a visit, about 87% are able to go back to class. So, you know, 87% of the kids that we will have a visit with are able to safely go back to class. A lot of times, it's just because they might need an OTC, or they might just need to have a pediatrician look at the student who fell on the playground and knocked his head, and does he have a concussion? So we can clear the student and things of that nature. The multiplier on the instructional hours saved is essentially, we will take the students that stay safely in school, and we just times it by three hours. So, you know, over the course of a school year, you know, we're now talking about 300, 400, 500 hours or more of instructional time saved. So that's our measure overall. And I'll just say quickly that most of the visits have happened, and Claudia, you work a lot with the schools, at Crocker, Longchamp, and the high school, where the preponderance of visits have been overall. And I know, Claudia, if you want to say a couple of words about those schools and the health offices there.
Yeah, the nurses are doing, you know, the visits. Obviously, not everything requires a Hazel visit. So I always think of the same kind of example. A Longchamp student came in with a bee sting, you know, regular bee sting. They washed it, they put some antihistamine cream, and then send them back to class with ice. The student came back in, he was still really uncomfortable, it looked a little bit puffier. So the nurse decided, you know, obviously, there's no immediate danger, he wasn't, you know, passing out, he wasn't, you know, but he was uncomfortable, he was in pain, and he did, he could have benefited, you know, from some antihistamines, so they called mom. Fortunately, I was able to help with that, because they needed a translator, so mom only spoke Spanish, but the son had said that mom had to stay at work. Like, she was like, she could not come to get him. And so she approved for that one-time verbal. They were able to see the student, get him some Zertec, get him some Motrin for, you know, his pain, he was very uncomfortable, you know, he was like all teary-eyed, and get him back to class with ice and some hydrocortone. Now, they called mom again to get permission for that stuff, so everybody was aware of what was happening. It's very inclusive of parents and the students and the nurses there. So once the student, you know, went back, he was happy, he was able to go back to class, but it was something that was a very normal kind of circumstance, like a bee sting, that required just a little extra help at school. So that's what we're seeing a lot of, things that maybe they would know what to do, or maybe the nurses would like to get a second opinion and be able to then administer some over-the-counter meds that are not part of the standing orders.
Great, thanks. I think we just.
On this slide, which, you know, I have a copy in front of me.
You could read it better.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're squinting.
On that chart, the red heading, the one on the right, it lists home visits. Is this something after something happens in the school, somebody then follows up and visits the family?
That's such a great question. So we have a telehealth option available for parents to use at home from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And so this is a great service, and I've been kind of promoting it with your principals as a way to help with your chronically absent students, who might not be able to get to a doctor, to get a note for the excusing of absences. I'm not sure necessarily what the policy is here, but I know most districts, there is like a certain amount of absences that you can do before you start to require like a doctor's note. And so if you have a student who's chronically ill, maybe they have asthma, and the parent is concerned that they want to keep them home, they're not sure whether they should go to school or not, they can always start a telehealth visit before school. They can get either clearance or recommendation to either stay home or seek further treatment. Or they can get like a prescription sent to them, to the providers consent prescriptions for them, so if they need like an extra rescue inhaler, they would be able to facilitate that for them as well. But they would be able to see them at home. If the provider decides that it would be better for the student to stay home, they will actually send the notes to the school excusing the absence. Right? So it's a good way to catch. And sometimes I've seen it in other districts where the student is sent to school, and then they have a follow-up check-in to see how the student is faring throughout the day, to make sure that they're feeling better or that there isn't a need to worry or call the parents and then have them come back and pick them up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
In the example that you gave of the bee sting and it quieted down, it took care of it, but what if that child had needed a shot?
Oh, yes, ma'am. If they were in critical health, if they were like having an anaphylactic reaction, if they were in need of emergency care, then the nurses have their own protocol for things that require like emergency urgent care. But the child was responsive, he was breathing while he wasn't having a major allergic reaction. It was mild enough that the Zertec helped and the hydrocortone.
So might not the nurse have done what you did on her own, as they have done, I guess, up till now, but?
The nurse would be able to do some of it, but like I said in the beginning, the nurse didn't have permission or access to be able to give the student either of the medications that the student received, so they were able to, she was able to then do that by attaining permission after the visit. So the providers called the parent and asked for that.
So your service, because it's doctor-based?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you a doctor, by the way?
No, ma'am.
What is your position?
What am I? I was a teacher.
No, but I mean in the business, or in what we're talking about?
Oh, what am I? I just do customer support, so I work as a customer success manager. I ensure that my nurses are well-trained, that they feel comfortable with the product. I work with the principals to ensure that they feel comfortable with our product and the community outreach.
So if they get a call, do they speak to you or do they speak to the doctor?
If they get a call.
Are you a doctor, by the way?
I'm not a doctor.
No, no, we are not doctors. We don't even play them on television, so that's not who we are at all.
So we have, the students only speak to a doctor or a PA that is supervised by a state-licensed pediatrician.
Correct.
So we sort of facilitate just the partnership overall in terms of working with Pam and our nurses on sort of the technology we put in the schools, but we're not at all involved in any of the clinical aspects of the program. That is our medical team overall. We are here to just sort of summarize some of the highlights and talk about it at a 50,000-foot level, if you will.
I'm sorry, one sentence you said, I couldn't understand because you dropped your voice. It was just after you said, "We are not at all, we are just..."
Oh, we're just here to highlight, you know, gains and things that we're doing and how we're working in the district, but we are definitely not medical professionals. We, I mean, I work with the nurses, so some stuff sticks. I'm allergic to aspirin, so anaphylaxis is a word I've known since I was like five, but in general, we don't, you know, we don't do any of that stuff. We're not diagnosing, giving medication, we're not doing any of that. That's either the nurses are distributing that directly to the students after there's a recommendation by a provider to administer that to them.
And what does a call cost?
What is the what?
What does a calling you cost?
I don't know that this, you know that?
So, yeah, Pam might be able to speak out of it all, but there's a, there's not a cost to any families in Pittsburgh for any of the Hazel services. So it's, you know, that would include either the visit with a doctor, any diagnosis, the OTCs are covered as part of the partnership as well. I think the only time there may be, you know, if there's a prescription call, then you could have to pay for the prescription through your insurance, something like that.
So then how do you make your money from this work?
Partnership with the district.
You're contracted through the district.
Yeah, we have a contract with the district.
Yes, so what does, do you have the details on the contract, how much money we're talking about?
I don't know. Mr. Shalafou, what do we, what is this setting us under?
I believe it was $120,000.
For a year?
And that's a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
The first year was a pilot program, which the services were provided for free.
And is it a yearly contract?
Yes.
Not a multi-year?
It's a single-year contract.
Pam, why are we only six out of the eight schools participating? Why?
So all the schools are participating. Some of them are just, you know, utilizing a little bit more than others, depending on, you know, the students that are presented in front of them and what the needs are. And just to, you know, break it down, the nurses have always been able to assess and recommend treatment.
All eight schools we get.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we have two schools who haven't yet.
Correct, correct. Yeah, and, yeah, yeah.
Is that something you need to do more training with?
I think we have one that has, because Memorial just, not their first visit, so we're down to just one. So seven out of the eight.
Yeah, yeah. So that is something that we're working on for sure, absolutely. And whether it's, you know, the families access it at home and/or at school. Yeah.
It's a great program. You mentioned, you know, the hours that the kids save, but how many parents are so happy that they, I know as a former principal, and I had to call parents to come and pick their children up, how many hours of work have been saved where parents haven't had to come pick their children up, take them to a doctor and get the same thing that they could have gotten? Yep, yep.
And we do share all of that information with their medical homes, so if there's a request for us to send that to the discharge summary, essentially, we can send that directly to their, like, long-term provider, so that there's communication and that they, you know, they can see the whole picture of what's happening. And that's like a chronic visit, the parents can talk about it too.
I'd also just say quickly, too, that this is not intended to be the medical home for a student, right? So this is intended to provide help at this very moment, but we're very interested in very much referring students back out into your community for further vision or dental or things that come up. And it's interesting, across many of the districts we work with, about half of the kids, I think I said this earlier, actually do not have a primary care physician. So, you know, we certainly would, I think in our ideal state, that would, we'd be able to help close that gap with local PCPs and providers in the community, so.
Folks, this is probably more for you, Pam. My understanding is most of the issues that we deal with or that the nursing staff deals with are behavioral health issues. Not, maybe not most, but a significant number of them are. They're not really sniffles, cold, flu, it's behavioral health. Do you folks touch on that at all by any chance?
We do. There's a couple of ways that we see it every day in visits. I think the number is 40% of, across a lot of our districts, of the physical health visits we do have some sort of behavioral health element to it, and Pam may have a really accurate number for Pittsburgh, but that's sort of what we're seeing. And, you know, the student that comes in at the same time every day, you know, with a headache, is there something, is there bullying going on, is there something else going on that might be contributing to that? So we have worked very closely with Pam and the district to identify and try to de-escalate those within the structure of a physical health visit, but certainly work with the district then to alert, and we have an escalation process that will identify the resources needed for, to get the students help when they have it. You're right, though, it is a very, very, unfortunately, all-too-common circumstance.
Thank you, thank you.
If I may, just briefly.
Yes.
I just wanted to applaud Pam for this. I think it's a great partnership. I remember it was two years ago, I feel like it was pre-pandemic, when we first heard Hazel Health, and my first concern, I thought was quite natural, was just skepticism, was a private company coming between the students and healthcare, and there was a lot of red flags, which Pam quickly put at ease. I think there's a lot of companies that, you know, especially in healthcare and education, that happen to health people, but they're also just primarily businesses. And then I think there's groups of people that primarily help people, and they just happen to be a business, and I think you guys are the latter, which is a great reason why we're partnering with you. And I think parts of the reason why this is a great fit is touched on in that example, although it's anecdotal, you know, when the mother couldn't come to school because of work, you know, Pittsburgh's a working-class city, and there's a ton of parents, if not a majority, that are in that same exact situation. So that value, to be able to handle that situation without the parent leaving from work, is huge, not to mention the time saved in the classroom from all that. So that's huge, the fact that the cost isn't on the parents, you know, in each moment, there's not some paywall that comes up, if you'd like to finish the phone call and pay, right? There's nothing like that. So I just think that's super important. And then the last part is just the context of this region that maybe you two don't know about, but the health services has gone down in this region and the state progressively in the last 10 years, and the home visits, the home telehealth visits kind of don't fill that gap, but it's just, it's part of the puzzle, you know, having those kind of health services in a holistic fashion, maybe not holistic, but you get the point. It's great, so really happy about it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Are we still going?
Why don't I go to the next?
Is there more?
There's a couple more slides, but.
Are there?
Unless...
Well, you've already exceeded your number of slides, but I mean, it's okay.
There are more in this three minutes, for sure.
I think we've probably answered this.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Yep, Ms. Reynolds.
I don't understand one thing, please clarify. These people are neither nurses nor doctors. You're a nurse.
I am.
Yes. And so what are they doing for you that you haven't done already? Are you just saying that the volume is so great that it sometimes you have to, I mean, you can talk to the mother, and the mother cannot come to school to pick up her child if you determine that it's...
It's more of a tech company than a healthcare company. They're not the actual healthcare professionals. professionals talking. They're more of like the liaisons that connect the students to their actual pediatricians or to pediatricians. So I believe the company is more of just a middle person.
We're just like operations.
Right.
Picture it like the care corporation.
But you don't, but excuse me if I direct it.
Forgive me, I just wanted to answer if I could.
Yeah, thank you for your help.
Forgive me.
But you don't, you don't connect them with pediatricians. You do, but out of town? And this is where you're suggesting that you try to line up local doctors to be the recipient?
What Mary Wolluff has done and continue to do is, you know, when students come in, like I said, the nurses assess and they recommend the next steps. Sometimes they can treat right there and they can go back to class. Sorry, some of my slides. Other times it's absolutely that they assess, they recommend, and the recommendation is for them to get further follow-up care. Sometimes that happens and the family can, you know, get that follow-up care, get an appointment with the doctor, but not always. Sometimes the families can't leave work. Sometimes, you know, they can't get an appointment. They end up later on in the evening trying to get into an emergency room or trying to get into a, you know, whatever, a care facility. And they may or may not be able to conclude that visit and then get treatment and everything else. This is something that, knowing as Aiden had shared, that there are needs in our district. There's transportation needs, there's linguistic needs, that this service is very diverse in providing. And they're that care coordination, wraparound service to help the student, help the families coordinate with ourselves and then further coordinate with their medical home. And if they don't have a medical home, then we work to connect them to a medical home.
So is so frequently, so you're saying, if I correct, hearing you correctly, the student is ill, needs further care, then he might slip through the boards because doesn't get to a doctor. You'll make an appointment with a doctor? You'll pay the, you'll pay the travel for the student to get there?
Well, this is telehealth, so we're not traveling. We're having a telehealth.
But when, okay, I'll just end.
And there are, you know, there are a couple of things that are done ahead of time. And in fact, perhaps the superintendent can bring up some of the photos of, you know, the prerequisite, which involves maybe a blood pressure, a temperature check, a height and weight, so that if there's something prescribed, they know how to prescribe it accordingly. And then there's actually a little student in this little video that we have, if we can access it, where he's sitting down in a chair and conversing with this physician, answering questions and resolving-
But we have no physician here in the picture yet.
There's, there's, there's on a computer screen. They are connecting right there.
Down the road, down the road. And do the parents have the right to not get involved with that if they?
Oh, we need the parent permission and the parents are actually invited to be part of the visit if they're able to. They can, they can call in and be virtual with the visit as well. Yeah.
And every time there's a visit too, just so that there's clarity, the parent is notified to the telephone number that they register their child with. So there's a notification that there's a visit being started and that their child is being seen. And then they also receive a discharge summary, which includes information on what to do if the child worsens or how to help with the symptoms that they were having at school and at home.
So you're going to pay the cost of the doctor's visit and the trip to the doctor or whatever it is?
Do we cover the trip to the doctor?
Yeah.
Well, they see our providers at school, so that's, that's where that cost is incurred at school.
High school's going to pay for it?
If they're at the high school, they would see the nurse. I'm sorry. Just for clarification, what was the question?
Who's paying for the doctor's visit for the travel to the doctor?
Nobody's traveling to see a doctor. If they need to see a doctor further after that, then they would, then it would be the parent's responsibility, correct?
And who's paying for the tele, tele visit?
There's a contract with-
With, not you, but with the doctor. There needs to be a doctor. So who pays for that?
Who pays for the doctor? Well, it's part of the contract and we, they're employed by the company. All the services that are incurred with that are covered by that. So if there's any medication that comes out of the card, if there's any follow-up visits, if they have a telehealth at home, if they have to have a follow-up at school, all of that is included in the contract that we have with the district. The only thing that we can provide are over-the-counter medications at home because we're not there to provide it. And we can provide prescription medication that needs to be picked up at a pharmacy because that's, that's not part of our service either. We do work with like GoodRx and the other discount stuff. And we do actually have a liaison for parents who have a hard time finding information or accessing costs for, a coverage for the cost of prescriptions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, next.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we'll go back to the agenda and actually provide an update on several items here. So I'm just going to bring up another presentation. So bear with me for one minute.
So as Bob is preparing the presentation, all of the remaining agenda items under superintendent's report are in this presentation here as we go through.
Will we be able to get a copy of this or was this already sent to us?
Well, no, it was not. We'll send you a copy after.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Can somebody just confirm that you can see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So I'll just start with the beginning that we've been using for several presentations to the school committee and the public, what our goals and commitments are. We're undergoing a strategic planning process, which we've updated the school committee on at prior meetings. Just wanted to again reaffirm and remind the committee and anybody watching out on F V P V what those are. So those six guiding commitments are curriculum that is accessible and reflective of all our students, the district-tiered system of academic and social emotional support, staff development and a diverse recruitment plan, strategic and effective use of all resources, and a sense of welcoming and belonging with students, parents, staff, and all members of the community. Lastly, community and stakeholders. So let's first start off with the school name changes. As we've been providing updates on redistricting committee or from the redistricting committee to the school committee and to the community, as we look ahead, it's necessary to change the names of two of the schools as a result of the redistricting. McKay Arts Academy is currently a K through eight school. And going forward, next year, it will be a grade one through five elementary school. So we thought it would be best to reflect the future grade span of McKay and rename the school McKay Elementary School. The South Street Elementary School will change from being a pre-K through grade four school to a pre-kindergarten, kindergarten center. And the proposed name for that school will be the South Street Early Learning Center. As we presented to you last month, the proposed first reading of the school calendar, tonight we come back before you for the second reading. As is past practice, the proposed calendar is shared with the teachers' union, who has an opportunity to review this and provide any feedback. And to date, the teachers' union has not provided any, I think, negative feedback and that the proposed calendar is acceptable to the teachers.
And Bob, I'll just quickly, so everyone knows, this is the second reading, so you'll be approving this tonight. First day of school again will be August 29th for grades one to 12, September 6th for grades K in pre-kindergarten. And the last day of school next school year will be on June 15th if there are no snow days. So all the errors that we identified last time were corrected. And this is the final version that will be going out if it's approved tonight.
Okay. John, thanks for that reminder. You know, one thing that we wanted to update the school committee and the community at large, as a result of the redistricting, is the start and dismissal times. The start and dismissal times of Pittsburgh High and Goodrich will stay the same, as will the start times of Memorial and Longscho. The proposed times of Crocker, Ryan, Golden, McKay will all be the same at starting school at 9:05 in the morning and dismissing at 3:25 in the afternoon. And for the South Street Early Childhood Center, kindergarten will start at 8:20 and dismiss at 2:40. And then the preschool morning, pre-K, will start at 8 o'clock, dismiss at 10:30. And then the afternoon preschool will start at 11:30 and dismiss at 2. And we've also included the early release times in the event that we have a half-day. One bit of new information here that we're sharing tonight with the school committee and the community at large are just some milestones in regards to student assignments. So on April 15th, we'll be distributing the student assignment guidelines brochure. On May 15th, the student assignment letters will be mailed out to parents. By June 15th, appeal decision letters will be sent. And by July, and actually August 15th will be the last day that the appeal decision letters will be sent to families. Moving ahead, as the school committee also has another agenda item for vote tonight, is the school choice for next school year. So what you have for you is a table showing current enrollment of by grade level students. What we've done is looked at for next year with some question marks in red as to our ability to accept the school choice students in those grades for next year. So again, as this table reflects current grade levels, our recommendation would be to close school choice for grades three, four, six, and seven for next school year, given the enrollment in each class of over 400 students. Moving on, I'd like to take this opportunity to update the school committee on the Student Opportunity Act. This journey started over a couple of years ago with the legislation that was passed in November 29 of 2019. And this is really a big win for Pittsburgh, whose beneficiaries are low-income students, students of color, English language learners who have been left behind by the outdated system, and parathetically also, and most impacted by the pandemic. The new law, which went into effect, will exceed $2 billion. And about 1.4 billion of that is above and beyond normal chapter 78. The three primary goals of the Student Opportunity Act is to narrow achievement and opportunity gaps for students who have been identified as students with special needs and English language learners, students who are low-income, and also students provide additional student support and guidance in psychological services. The next few slides are from the Department of Ed. The Department of Ed provided all school districts who are participating in the Student Opportunity Act, or who I should say are beneficiaries of the Student Opportunity Act, 21 options to prioritize. I'm going to go through the next few slides at a summary level. And after I go through these next three slides that quickly summarizes the 21 options, I'll share with you the three options that Pittsburgh Public Schools will be pursuing. So rather than read each of the options, I'm just going to read the options that are highlighted in green, which we're already doing, and also the ones that are in bold, which reflect the priorities going forward. So first of all, we recently purchased a research-based early literacy child literacy program in pre-K through grade five that was approved by the school committee last spring. And this year, we're having positive impact on this research-based tool to help our students learn. Early college programs focus primarily on students underrepresented in higher education. Pittsburgh High School has been leading the charge on that. This year, we have a little over 90 students participating in early college. And next year, we estimate that about 140 students will be participating. And one of our priorities is supporting educators to implement high-quality aligned curriculum. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Looking at some targeted student supports, Acceleration Academies and our summer learning to support skill development and accelerate advanced learners. We provided this last summer and most recently during winter vacation, February vacation over at Frankel. With regards to talent development, diversifying the educator-administerative workforce through improvement and retention, building a leadership pipeline for our staff. This is something that we've been working with Boston College's Lynch Leadership Academy, focused schools, and future management systems. It's important to have leadership depth and breadth across our schools, not only the principals, assistant principals, and S P S As and coaches, but also the teacher leaders. And we've also been working to develop leadership at central offices as well. Looking ahead to, we're operating in a very challenging recruiting environment. So also, we're trying to come up with strategies to recruit and retain educators in all our schools. So that's something that when we come back in future meetings with regards to next year's budget, we'll provide more information on the type of positions that we're looking to fill that meet the goals of the Student Opportunity Act. And lastly, increase opportunities for educators and support staff engagement cycle, continuous improvement, utilizing district and school teaming structures. We're all lifelong learners and education is constantly changing. The needs of our students and our families are evolving and we need to meet them where they're at. The last six options from the Department of Ed and the ones that we're already doing, again, increasing opportunities for all our students. So whether we talk about arts, enrichment, languages, athletics, or elective courses, those are things that we're looking at already. Having additional and improving our family-school partnerships. As Pam Rivers mentioned, you know, all the partners that the school nursing staff deal with in terms of third parties like luck. We're looking to expand partnerships with community providers. Also, again, that's, we almost reiterated in item 19 here, we've been working very closely with our staff, all labor units, to make sure that, you know, everyone understands that all our students can grow and achieve and that, especially coming back from the pandemic and with these funds, will, for the first time in many, many years, have the financial resources to do that. And lastly, facilities improvements to create healthy and safe school environment. Mr. Shalfo has updated the school committee and the community on the various investments made with S R funds and prior COVID funding sources. So the three priorities for Pittsburgh Public Schools, as previously highlighted or mentioned in bold, are supporting our educators to implement high-quality aligned curriculum, inclusion co-teaching for students with disabilities and English learners. That's something that we've tried to expand this year or have been working to expand and look to expand that further next year. And we look to hire additional staff to help us do that. Also, expanding the capacity to address the social-emotional learning needs and mental health needs of students and families. As I recall, the mayor being aware of the needs of our students. And also, we had a presentation a few meetings ago highlighting the mental health needs of our students.
Mr. Jokla, can I interrupt you for one second?
Absolutely.
I just want to summarize so everyone is clear. So Bob just went over the 21 evidence-based programs that the state said that we could choose from to implement the SOA plan, the additional funds we're receiving for chapter 70. So the three that Pittsburgh will be focusing on, Bob, just go back one slide, are these three right here. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that. So out of those 21, these are the three that Pittsburgh chose to focus on in their, in our SOA plan.
Thanks, John.
Yep. Yep.
And lastly, as we started with a overview of the strategic plan and kind of concluding, the goal here is to help all our students grow and achieve, no exceptions. Really, if all our staff, families, and community partners work together to identify and remove barriers to personal growth and achievement, then every student will be ready to learn and access high-quality instruction and social-emotional supports. And again, I just kind of share the values that are grounding our decisions in terms of what's best for our students, that we're growth-focused, we're vulnerable, trustworthy, and equitable, and collaborative.
Thank you.
Brings us to a closure there. Any questions?
Mr. Jokola, on the name changes, is that something for the schools that we have to vote on, or does that? Okay, yes.
Yep.
I would like to just make a comment as, as I'm seeing this, that it seems like the, the two joined words, "social-emotional learning," have reached a parity with education. And I'm, I'm not sure that we are equipped, or our teachers are, that we, the public education, should turn into a social-emotional parity there with the two. I, I'm just noting that those two words have been connected, and they come up, and they sound like they're equal, but we're an educational institution, and that's, I'd like to see more of the, of the math and the other things. And perhaps there are other parts of our society that do handle social problems and emotional problems, but I'm not sure that educators, I'm just noting this, and I don't know where it's going. I don't like to see a parity there. Okay.
Well, I guess, you know, the.
I'm sorry.
I see social-emotional learning and academics are combined. We've been talking about this and presenting those terms collectively for some time now, and it really comes down to, are the students ready to learn? And that's the social-emotional learning aspect. And once they're ready to learn, then we have the academics. And over the years, over many years, we've been providing professional development and training for our staff on the social-emotional learning component and skills required, as the needs of students have changed over time, and we want to be able to support our students in any way so that they can learn and be successful.
Well, I, I think that what we have seen is the educational, the basics, reading, writing, math, have not increased. In fact, they've decreased. And again, there's so much involved in that social development. Who, what are you teaching them socially? What are you teaching them emotionally? I'm just saying, it's a huge problem in, within the educational realm, or issue, issue within the educational realm.
Yes.
Have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Not to just be adjacent, but I don't think that math learning, math writing and reading have gone down per se. I think the district has had an increased focus on emotional and social learning because of the necessity. You can, you have to teach the holistic child, you have to teach the whole child. If they're not emotionally competent in the workforce, if they're not emotionally competent as adults, then what's the point of teaching them, you know, calculus if they can't use it in an actual professional setting, if they can't, you know, have critical thinking skills, so on, so forth? Critical thinking and those kind of skills that we teach, especially in later years of high school, are centered on having this baseline of emotional intelligence that they have to have. And certainly, if they want to go into secondary education, into college, having that baseline is incredibly important. I think the disciplinary record of the school district just proves to another point of why that needs to be a focus. So I understand Rosemary's comments, that it seems like that has inflated a lot, the focus on this, on that phrasing, but I just think the focus on it is well met. And I just, again, not to be adjacent, but I think that is the right approach, and I'd like to see more of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, you wanted to make a statement regarding.
Yeah, just so, as we move forward tonight, you're going to notice that we do not have the school names as an action item. We're just informing you tonight of our proposed name changes. We'll have that on for an action item for next, for next school committee's meeting, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Schalfo, did you want to go through the budget items?
I can go through those.
Thank you.
So we have six grants to be submitted, one 21st Century Internship Pilot Program. It's for $35,000. This is, this is the work closely with Pittsburgh State University and the Future Teachers Club at Pittsburgh High School for internships during the summer. We have three from the United Way or to the United Way. The first one, we would be the beneficiary of a grant being proposed by The Jump Incorporated. It's a company that does lessons around outdoor adventure to build confidence in students in building leadership skills as they grow. We also have a $50,000 United Way grant with a local nonprofit to develop, to develop summer program. A second, $50,000 to the United Way, and this is working with Inspiret Scholars. Students would be able to take 90-minute courses for four weeks during the summer, and these would be virtually with students from Stanford and MIT. And then the last two, the Harmon Family Foundation, DCU for Kids, one for $30,000, the second one for $11,557.50. Similarly, they are for our partnership between the Pittsburgh Public Schools and the Pittsburgh Art Museum, partnering with staff around professional development around world history, and increasing educational opportunities, including field trips for students in world history, and that's for grades six, seven, and nine. We have one grant to be accepted, that's for $2,500. That is through the Mass Cultural Council. We'll support the Stars Reading Residency Program. It's actually third graders over at McKay, which will be working with the Nashville River Watershed on ecological lessons. We also have action items this evening for financial support of the Pittsburgh High School VIP, Ban VIP program, which we've done in the past, that will provide transportation for students back to the individual middle schools. We also have an action item to bring our availability of our facilities back to pre-pandemic policy, that, that we will allow outdoor organizations to utilize our facilities with the appropriate application. And then we have two positions, both of these positions, you receive the general responsibilities in your packet. One is a mechanical maintenance technician, and that is through our school building maintenance department, and then adding a payroll purchasing assistant for the business office.
So these are new positions, Mr. Schalfo?
These would be two new positions, correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Does the. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed one of the most important ones. Right. And just to submit, we have received permission from the city council, but we're seeking permission from the school committee to submit our statement of interest for the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program for Longchamp Boilers for next year.
Excellent. Excellent. What is the pleasure of the committee? You wish to bundle the action items?
I have a question on.
Oh, Peter?
Action item 141, approved the superintendent's recommendation to allow the Pittsburgh Public Schools to advertise as a school choice district for FY 2223. Would that be with the exceptions of grades three, four, six, and seven?
Yes, sir, we did not have.
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Yes. Thank you, Pete.
Yep.
I'll make that motion that we add to the advertisement, the exception of grades three, four, six, and seven.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded, to add with the exception of grades three, four, six, and seven. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, as you may understand.
I'll make a motion that we bundle 141 through 149.
Second to the bundle?
Motion made and seconded to bundle 141 up through and including 149. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve 141 through 149.
Motion made to approve 141 through, up through and including 149.
Actually be to approve the bundle.
A bundle.
We, we.
Now we're approving the vote.
Seconded.
Second, that's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
No moves.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, as you may understand. Thank you, we are adjourned.